A few things before we start. Remember, this is a Q and A in front of the audience. We ask everybody to be respectful. Don't be personal in that. And when you ask the questions, also ask them towards all the candidates, because we're going to ask every candidate to answer that question. All right? So that way, we don't have one person talking all night long, and the other two people, or five people, or seven people are going, "When's our turn?" All right? We're going to start off really simple. We're going to go from left to right, open to closing. We'll start off down again. Introduction, please, and tell us a little about yourself and why you're running for the city council.
Yes, my name is Alan Fottenauer. I am running for an at-large position. I want to thank you guys for hosting this tonight and giving us an opportunity to share where we stand and to answer the questions you guys may have. It's kind of a long story of how I got to running for this, but one of the most common things I keep hearing is, "What got me in there? What made me become a politician?" And I don't really like that word. I don't care to be a politician. I'm just a guy that wants to do right and for the community that I love and that I was born and raised here. And so every time I've tried to get away, it keeps pulling me back. And so I just, I love the opportunity to get involved and to try and continue to make Pella a safe and prosperous place.
All right, my name's Kyle Nelson. I am running for a position in Ward 1, North Carolina. East and southeast Pella, south Pella. So I've lived here for 25 years or more. I've been married in the same home for 27 years. And I've raised four kids here and a new empty nestery. And so after 25 years of being a parent volunteer at school events and being at Juana's and working at different committees with tax ministries and different things like that, I find myself with some margin. And so for my job, I travel the state of Iowa. And so I get to compare Pella to all the other communities in the state, whether it be Decorah, or Algonah, or Storm Lake, or Shannon Dole, or Harlan, you can name it, Mount Pleasant, you name them. And I get to see how fortunate we are to live here and the things that we have here and how our government functions. And so as I've had margin, I want to be more involved in that. And so I look forward to the opportunity to serve Pella in a greater role. I'm running to have a greater impact on Pella and move Pella forward.
My name is Mark DeHatten. I have been your council representative now for 44 years. And I'm running again. A legitimate question would be, "Why would you do that?" And the answer is really quite simple. There's always something going on in Pella. And we've got some exciting things coming up in the next two or three years. And I'd like to be part of the team that addresses those.
My name is Bruce Keough. I have been on council for 20 years. Now, some people would say that's a long time, but I've always been under the shadow of this guy here. But anyhow, 20 years is a while. And I wasn't sure if I was going to do another stint. But I was strongly urged by some folks. And so I think we have a watershed election coming up. I love this town. I've raised my five children in this town. I have quite a few grandchildren around this town. And I really care for them. And that's what's driving me.
I'm Robin Paul Scrapp. And I pale in comparison. I've served on plating and zoning for Pella for only six years. So after these two, that's like nothing. My husband and I moved here in 2014, and we have eight children. We're on the homestretch, one left at home. But I was thinking today about this forum and why we do this and the good things about trying this and the tough things about trying this. And all of us up here, I know most of these members very well are here because we love this city. We think we live in the best place we could live, and we're proud to be from here. And though we may have different methods to what's coming in the future, different ideas, we're all here because we love this town. So thank you for giving us this opportunity.
I'm Spencer Carlstone. I'm a physician here in town, a father of seven. I love with my wife of 21 years. I read the first time. I'm an idea wrangler, a problem solver, a diagnostician. And I'm here because I think we're at a really critical moment in our narrative as a city. I think it's worth getting involved in. I'd love to be a part of running the narrative going forward in the want of prosper and growth and thriving, as well as health and wellness. I think what I do professionally lets itself really work with that because I can see problems fairly clearly and try to treat them, love the problems, and then try to help people fix those problems. Often, very little has to do with the doc at all. And I think that'd be true in this post as well. A lot of it has to do with individuals. This is a great town full of outstanding individuals who have throughout their history shown grit, invention, determination, acceptance, team-mindedness, all those things that have made us great. I think those are the same qualities that we're looking to score. So thanks for having us. I was before me for you guys tonight.
Hello. Can you hear me? Oh, there you can hear me. I have loved being your city council representative for Ward 1. It has been an honor and a privilege. My in-laws came right off the boat from Holland, from New York to Pella, Iowa, to Ward 1. And we have never left. We are so vested in the community and in Ward 1. We own a business. We have family. But most of all, the greatest joy I find is representing you and talking to you and meeting you on the road that you're traveling and listening. I don't know if you've noticed, but we have a yellow table in front of our business with six chairs around it. And we sit there and we talk and we listen to what people have to say. And then it's a privilege to take those joys, those concerns, not only from Ward 1, but from all of Pella and be your voice. And I'd like to be your voice for four more years. And if I didn't express how grateful I am for the last four years, I decided to wear it on my chest. So you can see it. I am wildly grateful to the people that put me in office. And I would be humbled and honored to serve again.
Good evening. I'm Tony Bachoven. I have eight previous years on the Pella City Council. And those were eight great years of serving our community and learning more about those people that we represent. And having been off now for a couple of years, it's given me a great amount of time to reflect on what is really the role of a councilperson. And the role of a councilperson isn't necessarily one that plans fun events or makes sure that we get bright fancy new things. It's how do we serve the residents of this community? And one of the things that I'm most proud of when I was on council before is we spent a lot of years, about 16, and I was a part of eight of those, working really hard to get this community out of a deficit and into a place where our credit was good, our Moody rating, as we like to talk about it at council, is as good as it can be for a community of our size. And having been off of the council, it's been interesting to watch how things happen and how quickly people deflect to borrowing money because they believe it's cheap or, as it's been referred to, is free. And so one of the things that really prompted me was, "This council is a council that needs experience." And as you heard, there's a lot of experience on this council. And this community needs people that are willing to listen and do what they want. I'm not running for council because I want to be a part of flashing new things. I want to be a part of the council because it represents the people in this community and that we leave it better than we found it.
All right, thank you very much, candidates. And at this time again, we invite anybody to come up here. Again, give each other plenty of room. We have until nine o'clock tonight, so we have unlimited time almost. A couple of things again, remind everybody, no personal attacks. Director, questions rather, to everyone. We do want to recognize some media this evening is here. I see Dr. Bob's up in the corner from King &amp; High in Carolinas. Steve Boyhouse is here, Mary County Express, Mary County Tribute, and David Opener. I don't know if the other papers here, if you are, are reading. Again, I recognize you too, but, okay. Just want to make sure that any media was here as well. We'll go ahead and open the mic. Don't be shy. Come on up. Please introduce yourself and where you're from, please.
I'm Gary Boink. And I've lived here in Pella for a few years. Raised four kids here. I guess that's not important. First of all, I want to thank all of you for both serving and being willing to serve. We all think we have ideas about how things should be done, but only a few will step up and say, "Oh, golly, I'm going to do it." So thanks to all of you. My question is this. Neighboring communities such as Newton have certainly experienced a loss of employers and employees. And it seems as though we're in a time right now where employers are really struggling to find employees. My question is, how can we or how can you get involved in some ways to ensure that Pella doesn't lose employers and employees? And how do you envision working with and towards that goal? Thank you.
Can I start?
By all means.
I serve on a board for Iowa Workforce Development that covers central Iowa mostly. We meet with people all over the state. But that has been a great focus of ours. How to manage employers with employees and how to advance the business in our communities. A couple months ago, I asked Wyler Industries to host a roundtable workshop where the employers, people who worked, we had school superintendents, we had teachers, et cetera, there. And what came out of that two and a half hour session was incredible. And I run Habitat for Humanity. And for example, we have a class that comes in and does our building in Knoxville. And so when I met the man there who did the training that paid for people to go to learn a trade, and there are programs that will pay for that, I said, "Come over here. I want you to meet these people." And now a partnership is formed between them and our students so that our students that want to do construction now have an avenue to pay for their education and to go into that field. And so I think that happens a lot, and the communities don't know it. We want to help those employers. We want to supply those people. We want the people to find those employers. And great things are happening.
So let's go through my first answer.
As a businessperson, local businessperson, with 33 years, I understand the struggles to find good employees. That is not just unique to Pella or Iowa. It's a national dilemma. But I think that as businesspeople, we need to recruit, not just locally, not just state, but we can draw people. We have a lot to offer in this community. People want to live here. I've talked to people that come from the coast and come into town, and they love our community. So I think that the community schools in town here has done a very good job with the Career Academy. I think we're working with them right now and maybe starting a trades premiership. Those things are all things that businesspeople and the community can get involved. I think our heritage brings a lot to, and our convictions, to what this community is and what draws people. I don't know if you brought up Newton, Gary. I think Newton had a lot of amenities. But yeah, when Maytag left, those amenities didn't necessarily hold the people. They didn't hold Maytag. It's a business climate, and I think we have a good business climate. As council, we have worked with businesses. We work with them all the time. I do feel that our infrastructure and our responsibility as council members and as city government is to support, to support infrastructure. I don't know that we really want to... We feel that we have to fund things. Business is the lifeblood of the community.
I am an unashamed supporter of our local businesses, large and small, business-friendly, and am very concerned about all the health-winning signs I see around town. Now, granted, like Bruce said, this is not unique to Pella. And we've done a little traveling in Iowa and neighboring states this summer. It's everywhere. We arrived in Decorah on Monday afternoon, and we struggled to find a place for dinner Monday, Tuesday night. The pattern was most stores and restaurants were closed Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday for a lack of people. It is a big competition, and everybody is trying to raise the bar. And I would suggest that we are competing with the Detroit metro area for young and talented people. Given that, I think we have a... We are blessed. We have good corporate citizens who give and give and give to this community. And we have to do everything we can to understand where they're going and cooperate with them in any way that we can for everybody's mutual benefit. They bring the jobs. They bring the sales for our retailers. They bring the property taxes. We just have to appreciate that.
So I think the biggest thing that we can do in working with our business, and it was number one, is listen to them, all right? And it's just like any good partnership, any good marriage, any good relationship that you have, it's all about listening and understanding the needs of the other. And so I would say that would be the first thing, is listen to not only the big industries, but that's important because we're talking hundreds of jobs there, but the medium-sized businesses and assault businesses as well. In my conversations with those folks, there's a few things that come up. Number one is affordable housing. So we have to address that. Prairie Ridge is a great effort toward that, although I don't know that that's, you know, affordable is a relative word, right? And so we have to make sure that if we're going to recruit and retain employees that they're able to live here in an affordable way. The other thing that I think amenities do make a difference, okay? I think that in an appropriate living situation in a community, there are a lot of things that are to offer, not only for the young families, but to adults, to older, to the older generation. We're all active, and we want to be active. And so I think the amenities and the programs that we have, that we can be a part of putting forth, are important to attracting and retaining employees. And certainly, the other thing is that in order for business to thrive here, we do need the infrastructure piece. And so that can never be a piece that we let go. I think that that is a critical part of moving any community forward.
I think for me, the first thing that comes to mind is the ability to attract and to keep young adults, whether that's single adults, whether that's adults with families. I was just talking with a young adult the other day who has a kid and one on the way. And he was telling me, he said, "One of the most important things is it is for the affordable housing," which I'm sure we will talk about plenty tonight. And what I was struck was, he said, "If somebody settles in another community, they're much less likely to move here later because they will have already put down roots." So whether that's they start out in Knoxville, or Oski, or whatever it is, like, we need people to start putting roots down right out of college. We're so fortunate to have Central College that can start, that supplies many jobs with young professionals. And so in order to provide a place for younger people who are just entering the workforce to stay here, to put roots down here, and I think whether that's through amenities, whatever that looks like, we've got to do what we can as city council to really attract and to keep young adults that are hopefully here for decades. And that will help us in the long term. And I'm not saying that we can't attract older people, but we, again, we, this is something that I see as a younger person, is a lot of our housing is geared towards older people, whether it's retired people or whatever. And that doesn't always work itself down the ladder in attracting younger people because typically retired people, I know, shocker, they don't typically fill workforce positions. And so that doesn't always help us. But we've got to find the balance. And that's, for me, I love sitting in the middle of the good, the bad, the ugly. I love trying to find solutions for them, so.
I'm in the middle.
So I think if you think back to the question about, "What can city council do to attract business, keep business?", that's what I'm saying. One of the things that I'm really excited to see coming now to fruition is when I was on the council the last time, toward the end of my last term, just a small part of the fiber project that many of you have experienced, right? You've probably had a hole dug in your yard and a machine sitting there pulling in something. So I'm really excited about the fact that that's coming to fruition. It'll be online soon. In some parts of town, it already is. And the beauty behind that is, you know, as a city council, we don't dictate to a business how you incentivize your employees. But what we can do is make it easier for them to attract people. And through the pandemic, I think one thing we've learned is we don't all have to go to the office every day at work. And so the ability to attract younger people that would prefer to work a couple days a week from home, that's going to be possible now. And that's a really cool thing. You know, that fiber project isn't just about surfing the internet faster, right? It's really about how you can make that flexible lifestyle a reality for a lot of people that's important to. So that's one of the things. As part of the Ospeleuce Street corridor, one of the things that we identified was there's a lot of very cool older homes on that corridor. And how do you get young people to want to put some labor in and work on those homes and make that a home? Revitalize some of those houses? And there are tons and tons of opportunities financially, grants, all kinds of things like that that would incentivize young adults to want to take on a task like that. Because as we all know, the price of dirt is not getting any cheaper in this town. So that's a great way to get a young family that's got the ability to put some sweat into it, get them into an older home, let them redevelop it, and make it theirs. And so however we can do that as a council to help identify those funding opportunities, maybe help take some of that paperwork out of the way for them so that they can get into a house and really make it a home. And we get the benefit as a community of keeping those big old homes in our town versus, you know, seeing them continue to get dilapidated and eventually they get to a place where they're beyond repair, right? So to me, that's how we can support industry and support keeping young adults in our community.
So great first question, because I feel like that's the question. That's why I feel like this is the critical point in our narrative as a city, to retain the companies we have and enjoy the fruit of, as well as recruiting and retaining the talented people that fill the vital posts of these companies. So great start of a question. That's the question, hopefully, I might. I think you'll hear a lot of options, a lot of things out here. Most of them are really great ideas. I think the real symptom of this problem is the fact that the last 10 years over census, we've grown by 100 people as a community. And nine of those is the Carlstones, who can fashion a policy. So it's falsely elevated there. The reality is, that's not anything but a symptom of an attitude that we've had as a community. And this is an election about city leadership. And I think it will kind of boil into a couple of options, which is great. It's a lot easier than a multiple choice question. But it's either we get busy growing and developing to retain and attract talented workforce and retain our beautiful companies that provide so much for all of us, or we stay conservative, hands-off, uninvolved, let the businesses kind of fight it out and see what happens. I think the tender data from the census supports that that was not a healthy choice over these last 10 years. And that hopefully choosing differently will result in a healthier next 10 years. We can go into further details down the road. But I think that is the question for this election. I think that's the question that you'll hear about tonight. So great start of one. I agree with Alan. One of the low-key secrets, I think, would be to try to figure out how to keep the 20 to the 30-somethings here. And I think I don't climb the understanding of that generation. I have graduated out of it. But I think they're about experiences. I think they're about not necessarily ownership of things. It's a rental kind of economy now. So it's much more about experiential life and living together than it is about necessarily even owning a home. But we have to provide those experiences here now, whether it's throwing axes while renting a beer, or whether it's bowling, or whether it's mountain biking at the park, whether it's enjoying Lake Red Rock. We have a box to offer. I think those are underdeveloped and need to be further developed. But harnessing our great birth rates, keeping these 20 to 30-somethings that graduate from here, have a connection to here, leads right into getting Central College and Pella's relationship deeper connected. So we keep those graduates in town because they come from all over the world, all over the country. And they're very gifted and talented by the time of graduation. We'd love to keep that potential in town. I would love to see the greater idiocy between Central College and Pella. And I think Alan touched on that earlier. So that's just a few ideas off the top.
It is really hard being the last one. It is super hard. So every day, 5,000 extra citizens, they're not citizens. Every day, 5,000 people drive into Pella to come to work. Every day. Of those 5,000 people, 8,000 of them drive up and down Oski's corridor. Why are these people not living here? That's what we need to find out. We need to find out. We need to ask prep questions, and we need to get creative. That's where we need to start. We need to understand, "Why are they not living here?" Are they leaving because... Are they leaving because they're living in more affordable communities? Are they leaving to be around family? Are they looking at a 45 minute commute and thinking, eh, it's not that big a deal? Those are the questions we need to ask ourselves before we start throwing money at something. We need to understand it first. We need to get creative. We need to do things that are different, things that attract people to our community. That's why I love the Osko's corridor project, very different. Revitalizing one of the oldest areas in our community, that's awesome to me. Look, I can go to Target and I can go to big box stores and I can go to a million chain places within 45 minutes of my run hour. But I think the key in this is questioning, understanding, creativity, and in restoration and renovation of the jewels that we already have. Experiences, yes, you're right Spencer. The, the young people and the older generation likes experience too. We need to understand the systemic cause of the problem and then move forward.
Hi, I'm Leanne Wazick, Ms. Fisher. Right now I live in Warren Creek. I have lived in Pella pretty much all my life. I went to Pella Christian, grew up at Pella Christian grade school, Pella Christian high school. First I thought to address something that you said, when you had mentioned something to the effect of why are people not coming in to live? I can tell you, it's, much of it is because it's too expensive. Okay? I can speak from experience, I can speak from what I've heard from younger folks, that includes my daughter, okay? Then something I do want to ask is, when I lived in the older part of Pella, we struggled with the old sewer system, okay? We had sewer in our basement every time it would break. Nothing was being done. Very frustrating. Yes, Pella's beautiful, a lot of good things are coming up, a lot of new things, but why aren't we taking care of the old things? Why are we not taking care of the sewer system? I have spoken to several individuals who don't want their children to go downstairs after it rains for fear of what they might run into. We've had a hydrodermic needles in our basement. We've had, well, you can not imagine what we've had when we lived in our house in the older part of town. It's still happening, guys. So I'd like to know what each one of you are going to do about it.
That's a great comment. And it goes back to one of the reasons that I'm running and why I think experience is important right now in our community. You know, we spent, as we were paying down the debt and getting our financial stability back underneath of us, one of those projects we had left to do was getting the overhead lines underground on the, the south side of town. Getting that done was super important. And it goes back to, to me about prioritizing projects. You know, there's, every one of us could come up with five or 10 things that we'd like to see done in town. But in my perspective is when, when we're going to ask the citizens of this community to take on debt for projects, it's, it's those kinds of things that need to get fixed because it's not fair. It's not fair to them to not let their kids go in their basement. We talked about how we keep people in Pella, right? Well, a lot of these young, young adults are not buying the, the big fancy houses in, you name the neighborhood in town. They're often buying homes in the older part of our community. So why wouldn't we prioritize that to, to make that priority to get the infrastructure? You know, infrastructure you'll hear tonight becomes a buzzword in the end until someone defines it. And I think we all expect every time we turn the switch on, the lights come on, and when we turn the tap, the water's clean. It's no different with our water and sewer. So to me, it's one of those things that has to be a priori, priority. Things like expanding the swimming pool and, and baseball parks and all those things are really important, but nothing's more important than making sure people enjoy the home in which they live and the town that they're doing it in. So to me, that's, that has to be a priority. And, and I think that in, in past, you've seen that from past city council in Pella that, yeah, we try to get some fun projects in there, but at the end of the day, our responsibility is making sure your streets are good, your sewer works every time you need to use it, the lights come on. You know, we spent a lot of money on the water treatment plan, right? To make sure our quality of water was better. I think we'd all agree that those things are worth our money, right? If we have to pay more taxes, none of us like paying taxes, but if we had to pay more taxes, you kind of go to bed and I think, well, it's probably worth it. So to me, it's a very high priority and it's one of those things that does rank above, you know, fun amenity type things. You pick your amenity. I'm not against sports and those kinds of things, but it certainly, when I'm thinking about it, that's a much higher priority to me than some of these other fun flashy things.
Well, look at me being number two this time. This really is a subject that if you want to see me go up like a Fourth of July rocket, just talk about sewers. Because we have a problem. We don't just have a little problem, we have a gargantuan problem underneath our feet. We have a crumbling sewer system and we need to address it. We need to ensure the health and safety of all of our taxpayers, not just the ones that live in the right neighborhoods or in the new houses. I'm going to repeat it again. If you serve on city council, you are obligated to see to the health and the safety of your citizens. I was in an office one day trying to check in for my appointment and the receptionist said, well, honey, I'll be home, I'll be home, I'll be home. Don't flush the toilet, just don't flush the toilet. I understand that you have to go, go to the neighbor's house. You see, the problem was, is it was raining outside that day and their sewer system fails every time it rains. So someone has to go down and put a foot on a lever that closes a valve that shuts off the sewer system to their house. And it's not the only house. I have sat with a lady for hours, three hours, learning about sewer systems. I know more about sewer systems than I probably should, but I rather enjoy it. When you serve on city council, you will spend about 1% of the time talking about what you want to talk about, and you should spend about 90% of the time talking about the things that you should talk about. And one of those things are sewers. And ladies and gentlemen, we have a problem. And second to the sewers is our street system. Not glamorous, not glamorous at all. But again, I'm going to say it one more time, we have an obligation to the health and safety to our citizens. If those sewer lines fail downtown, we talk about a business problem, we talk about a tourist problem, it would be catastrophic. So our biggest problem is something you don't see. It's beneath your feet.
So I don't disagree with those who said sewers need to work for health and safety of the public. I've not been on council before, nor am I currently, so I don't feel personally responsible. I'm sorry that you're having me do that. I don't know if there's going to be a good answer from anyone up here or the city of that matter, but that is certainly a fiery responsibility of the city government. There will be a lot of learning to be had for me as a, if I am elected to this post to learn why things like that have happened for so long. I own an old building uptown that I know the previous owner's here. It's a beautiful old building and there's a historical artifact in the basement of the building that I'm not interested in preserving. And it is the original sewer from the 1890s or 1900s. It happens to be the public sewer, it happens to be in our basement. And that's just a, that's just a little snippet of the kind of mess that exists and that's just that once we up town. So I'm familiar with the problem, I'm sorry that you're having me experience that. My experience with that project uptown, it's just that it's been years and years of unwillingness to address it, going back beyond anybody you know on this council. It's a quick fix here, it's a cheap fix there, it's, we'll not address it now. Kind of leadership style, that's what I would love to change. Again, this is an election for city leadership, and so I think that's pretty important, pick a leader. But I think that's an example, and I have a great example of how previous leadership has not been dealing with it. So I'd love to see that opportunities arise if so elected. You're absolutely right, it's a health and safety concern, I appreciate it.
This is a subject that I think Tony, Lynn and I sat around a table and talked about two years ago. And this is near and dear to my heart, as housing is, so are the problems with housing. And I deal with people every day that are living with issues like that. It's hard because this is one of the things that has to be done and the community doesn't see the bang for their buck. There is nothing flashy to see when it gets, hold on a second, when it gets done, you know, nobody has anything to see but maybe the road that got replaced because that got ripped up. So I know that this city has some plans to do that. I know they've been working on it because we addressed this two years ago, but I don't think that should happen. I don't think that should ultimately result in the, actually, that ultimately will result in the, the loss of that house if something isn't done. So I am an advocate of getting grant money out there so the stuff inside the house can be helped, we can help the homeowners and we can work on the infrastructure. And I think everyone has seen the projects that are happening downtown, so some of that's happening, but we just need to make sure that it's covered citywide.
I would like to apologize and meet up and sadly, you are not the only one that has that issue. Maybe just a little history lesson here. You know, as, as years have gone on, stormwater and has, stormwater really is the majority of the problem, runoff of stormwater. A lot of communities, most of larger, have started their own stormwater utility. We really, I think it's been about 10 years, it's been 10 years where it has really come to light and we have made some strides. Sadly, we have quite a ways to go. I think what you're seeing now in Mooseport Alley, that a major part of that is to handle the stormwater. I think there was a major upsizing of stormwater. Out by Westford, and I know I have some people I know that live in that area and that has a leading that problem for them. But sadly, we have a lot of areas yet and, but really, that is the duty, let me say this, that is the duty of your council to deal with, that is the duty of municipality, that is infrastructure, basic. And that really was the outlaws.
Yeah, Bruce, some good comments there. Help me out this picture. What neighborhood are we talking about?
Columbus Street.
Columbus Street. And what timeframe?
Like six years ago.
Okay. Okay, okay. And did you have a pump in the basement to raise wastewater up into the sewer? To prevent backflow, yeah. But I know there are homes in this community where basements were built below the level of the sewer, should have never happened, but it did years ago. And you, you have the other issue where you try to keep it out. We do every year run a televising program through a portion of the city sewer system to identify issues. Some of these can be corrected by lining the sewer pipe, a technology they can't type, wrap my mind around. And it also identifies the places where we have to go to work and replace. But Bruce was dead on, the, the big issue is what they call inflow, infiltration, I and I, and the imagine when stormwater overwhelms the system. And all new, new streets, new sewers, replacements, a great deal of effort is directed towards stormwater because the DNR says they have to be separated, which in the end is not a bad idea. But we, we do have old stuff that we, we try to correct, but it's a ongoing process.
Well, I feel your pain. I've lived in, in, in two homes that had issues like that and it's no fun, replacing drywall, replacing carpet, losing toys, losing, having outlets short out, all that kind of thing, so I completely get it. I also was in a town not too long ago, I mentioned this at the last forum, where the, the city in which I was in was, was, had a building project going on downtown and they were replacing their infrastructure at the same time. And the downtown was, was a ghost town. And so I think it's wise, as I think the city council currently does, to devote a significant proportion of our budget toward infrastructure. And I think that's a no brainer, to Mark's comment, in a way that's smart and with, in areas that have the most need. But I also want to make sure that we understand how it impacts our businesses downtown because downtown is one of the, one of the critical areas, right? And so we want to have minimal impact on the business, so we need to communicate with the businesses downtown. So I mean, what seasons of the year, what, what, what times, what areas do we do, do first? You know, all those are conversations that need to have, that we need to have. But it's no doubt that this is a critical issue that we need to devote money to.
Yeah, it's, it actually is really sad to hear that thankfully I have not had those experiences, but I, I definitely think anytime safety is an issue, and that is a huge safety issue, it's a huge health issue, money, money can't be a hindrance to that. Safety should be our number one priority anytime that we, we look at spending money. And I'm also a huge advocate of if you're going to spend money, do it right the first time. I, I, I've heard of things where, and I've seen it, not necessarily just our city, but how we'll spend a million dollars to basically put a Band-Aid on something and it's like, that, that to me is, is crazy. I would rather spend two or three times that to get it done right the first time because otherwise, five years, 10 years down the road, we're going to have to do the exact same thing and it's going to cost us even more money. And so, yeah, I, I actually, I greatly appreciate you bringing that up because I think that is a huge health and safety concern that does need to be addressed. And I, I am not as aware of some of those areas and, and I would love to talk to people actually of, if there are areas that continue to have these problems so that they can get addressed and get addressed soon.
I'm yes, direct to you. I'm from Chicago. We moved here five years, job change for my husband. We chose to come here because we wanted to live in Pella as it is, in terms of being a small town. And so I, I just wanted to share with you that I understand, I, I, you know, lived in a big city my whole life and understand about work and jobs and everything, at the same time I really would not want to lose our identity and start going into all this big growth, growth, growth. There's something called smart growth and slow growth. So we are planners and I, and I don't mean to be insulting or anything, but sometimes it seems like some of the newer stuff going on, because they were in such a rush, it just kind of keeps, sounds like it's going up overnight. And I don't know this, if there was a lot of And I don't know this, if there was a lot of planning of where everything is being put, and yet I just don't know that. But, you know, there's a lot of developments outside of town that are pretty pricey. And, um, yet I think there needs to be, you know, things may be closer in, and maybe more even apartment buildings, like for young people, you know, they have something in South Des Moines that they're building for. And anyway, I just want you to address that I can lecture, um, you know, about smart growth. Um, and people like it, though the size of it is, in a way. So how do we keep both?
Let's go ahead and start with Mark this time.
Hi, you raise a very good issue, ma'am. Concern is not only our community, but our school systems. It has enormous ripple effect. Smart growth is absolutely the goal. Our tools for doing that are our zoning code, which Robin is familiar with, and the comprehensive plan, which gets updated about every five years, and tries to replace where things ought to be, light industrial, longer families, single family, these kinds of things. But smart growth is very much a challenge. We do not wanna lose our character, in, in my opinion. A lot of keeping Pella's character has to do with you and me. It is how we treat the newcomer, and how we envelop them, how we get them involved. That's how you keep the character. Smart growth is, is a total goal. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I would say that I think anyone in favor of growth for the community means smart growth. It's not a population overrun or a population, you know, boom here that I think any of us are after. One of the things that was brought up earlier was the need for workforce, right? And so, inevitably, if we choose to grow, or if we try to, well, if we try to keep Pella the same, we can do that from our identity standpoint, you know, from our Dutch heritage and from our, our value structure. We can do that. Uh, but if we wanna address the workforce needs, inevitably, and we will need to grow in some fashion, right? And so, I am, I am, uh, I do hear you, and the fact it does need to be smart, and it needs to be, as others have pointed out earlier, uh, in a, in an affordable way, right? But in no means do we wanna, by no means do we wanna impact what has made Pella unique over the years. And something as a, as a, you know, someone who's lived here for twenty-five years but has not, didn't grow up here, a place that I've really come to appreciate, and, uh, and I think you have too, as someone who's just moved here, so.
Do you have to do it in order?
Yes, Spencer. I need to give my comments out before I, you know. You need to go, Spencer. Uh, no, I, I agree a hundred percent, but, uh, and I had it written down earlier, actually, that, that our growth does need to be controlled, and it needs to be stable. Our, and a lot of that, again, goes back to even some of our infrastructure stuff. Our, we're, we aren't totally set up to be able to take in two thousand new people. You know, my, my goal is, my goal is not to become an Ankeny or an Altoona. It is to continue to be, um, what, what makes Pella a charming place. And I think, I think Mark was the one that alluded to it, and it is us, it's we, it's we the people that make Pella, Pella. And so, I think we can still continue to, to sit in the middle of, of, we need more people. We can bring people in, but we can also be what makes Pella special, and continue to, to make this a desirable place for people to come in, whether, whether young, whether older. Sorry, that wasn't geared towards anybody. But, no, I, I think, I think that is definitely a thing that needs to be at the forefront as we grow, is that it needs to be controlled, um, 'cause, 'cause we, I would, I would hate to see us grow too fast, and then all of a sudden, the bottom falls out, then, then what? So we do have to, we have, we have to grow controlled. I agree a hundred percent with what you're saying. So that's a great question, and one of the things that I've heard loud and clear is, um, as I've walked around downtown and talked to business owners, not only downtown, but we have a lot of small businesses outside of the square that have a pretty strong voice as well. One of the things that, that I keep hearing is, let's be careful not to get so consumed in, in what we like to talk about as amenities that we need to keep people in Pella. And let's not forget about why people come to Pella. And, and one of the things that I've said to other people is, as a community, we have to stop apologizing for who we are and be proud of being Pella. You know, Pella is unique, it's different, um, it's small, it's cozy, and, and those are reasons that people come here. And, um, through the last eight or nine weeks of, of going door to door and talking to groups around town, um, one of the largest groups of citizens in our community are thirty to forty-five-year-old adults. And as I've asked them, you know, "I'm forty-eight, why didn't I go to Des Moines?", or "Why, why did they come to Pella?" And they came to Pella not because we have all kinds of places to hang out at night and fun things to do. It's because their kids can walk to the park and not have to worry about any trouble. They have relatively low to no crime in our town. We have the, an amazing school system, both, uh, in Pella, Pella Christian and Central College. We have amenities that, um, that serve us culture in their lives. So I, I think it's really important that while we can get consumed in growth, and, and, you know, I hear it all the time, "Well, in Johnston they do this, or in Altoona they do this, or in Ankeny they do that." And that's great, if you wanna live in Altoona, or Johnston, or Ankeny. And I'm not saying we should just stop building things in our community, but, but I do think that we have to be very focused on not losing who we are. You know, we, we are a town committed to our Dutch culture, and we should be proud of that. And, and so when new people come here, it's our job to integrate them into that, and make them comfortable with it. You know, how many people have you talked to that said, "Did you go to Tulip Town this year?", "That went last year." Well, they missed out, because there's all kinds of ways for them to get involved, whether that's in a food stand, or, or whatever it is at the Dutch market. So to me, those are the kind of things that we need to be, you know, laser focused on. How do we get them to be a part of our community, not just because they live here, but how do they get integrated into our community? And that's one of the things that we really need focused on.
Hey, so, um, back to the question about smart growth, I think coming back to the idea of it's fantastic. I've been discussing with people the idea of thoughtful and intentional growth. I think those are both really important word choices in my mind. I think the thoughtful and smart maybe interact there. I think smart for some people means financially, uh, efficient and reasonable as well. I think that's also somehow an eye of the beholder. I think somebody, um, will always be disappointed with spending money. Others might be saying, "Well, you spend more", so we want to balance everybody's, uh, opinions there. Um, I think the history of Pella is absolutely our identity, what a fantastic identity it is. This city of refuge, I think is a huge part for us to remember. And while I think I understand what Tony's saying about integration of people here, I wanna be sure that we also become a place where people can bring what they have to offer here, instead of having to become like us. I happen to have completely enjoyed where I would choose for four days, but I'm loving to do it because it's a huge part of our identity, and I, I, it's been fantastic to be involved. There is not comfort, but it's fun to wear it because it opens the doors, but your feet hurt a lot. But I think, so we have to embrace that, who we are. I think it's, that is our core, and then there's more to us, right? We're multi-billion dollar international company headquarters. We are full of entrepreneurs, or brewing coffee, or, uh, writing technology software that's sold around the world. We are making, uh, drillers, or, we are flower arranging, unlike no one else does around the world. And so, that's also who we are. That's not necessarily specifically Dutch. It's not specifically historical, but certainly partly we are. I think that's a remember as well. I, I'm becoming increasingly convinced, as I get on, on the older side of my life, that living systems are either growing, or they're invalid, which is a friendly term. And I'm on the evolution side. I eat a little bit more in the morning than, you know, that kind of thing. I see my kids run to a wall, bounce right up, without the evidence. We all understand that there's that kind of dire portion of who we are. I think that exists on the community as well. I, I just cannot be convinced, uh, because we're very, uh, to admit it's a. So not to this, that we can stay in that middle, that sweet spot in the middle. I think we have to remember our identity and maintain it, hold on to it, then add to it. I think that's a beautiful part of our country, and it's a beautiful part of our state, and it's a beautiful part of Pella. So I think I would highlight that as part of smart growth as well. And I am also convinced that the city has to absolutely be involved in directing that growth. If we need to, the businesses, or entrepreneurs, or developers, that may get out of control, uh, if it's, uh, if it's allowed inside of the zoning code. So that's why I think the city needs to be proactive and involved, and lead, instead of just allowing things to happen. And we've mentioned that Norwalk and Ankeny is in Altoona's, uh, I don't want to be those either. But we are competing against them. I too have met a lot of folks who are at the end of their working careers, and a lot of come to Pella because we're awesome. Awesome. That's why some people, I can't suppose I know why everyone is here, but I would assume there's a big chunk of over here because of Jax. And I think we can't lose sight of that either. We have to be competitive in this market, of course. We can't wait for our workforce to grow from birth to working age. We have a really great birth of a narrow community, and that takes eighteen years. So we've gotta be much more proactive than that, and recruit people. We are recruiting against Altoona, Pleasantville, Norwalk, and Waukegan, and all of Des Moines. We won't be those places. We don't wanna be those places. We have something more to offer than these places. And that is that identity issue. That if we don't understand that position in this workplace, that we have to be competitive, then we have the potential to lose our gurds, our old fabric, and then we no longer will be all enjoying. No one's really talking about wanting to get smaller, but I'll say, I'll say the same. I'm not sure that's possible, so we're in the same one other direction, so that's.
I wanna make sure, Nancy, that I, I understood your question incorrectly. And, and if, if I'm answering it incorrectly, please don't hesitate. But I think what I heard you say is, I don't want us to not see the forest through the trees. I want us to understand the things that we do have, and the abilities that we do have in this community, and look at those as assets. And some of those things are things that you can build. And it's that, the ability to take a walk downtown and get a Dutch ladder. It's the ability to have safe streets. It's the ability for your children to ride their bikes. And those are all things that we, we need to maintain. And the second part of your.
Oh, go ahead. I just said I, I never intended to say, uh, to be stagnant, that's.
That, to stand still, yeah. No, I didn't interpret it as that.
No, not you, other people.
Oh, okay, well then I'm glad I asked. Because there's nothing more frustrating than going home and saying they didn't even get my question. So that's why I asked, and I wanna make sure I'm answering it appropriately, I'm looking for you. It, I, I think I heard you say that we need to look at some of the assets that we have and build upon those, i.e. looking at our historic homes, looking at our historic buildings, building from within, instead of building from without, and, and looking at growth as a very rapid necessity, instead of being something that, again, is talked about, is planned, and is understood, and most of all, is affordable for our city government. Tony alluded to it earlier, we have a Moody Bond rating. It took us sixteen years to get that. It was ascertained in two thousand and nineteen under Mayor Yorke. It took a long time. And it was rapid, quick, unplanned growth that brought the spumey of that rating. A lot of people, and I know Harold Buxtrayland is in the audience as well, a lot of people put a lot of time and a lot of courage into saying, "We wanna grow, but we need to hold the line." We need to hold the line. I, if, if, if we go back there, I want you to think about it. If we go back to that, and we aren't smart, and we don't keep our eye on the Moody rating, and we get into spiraling at an alarming rate, if you have a five-year-old child today, he or she would be twenty-one before we dug out again. And I'm just not going to be responsible for that. So growth, yes, we need to grow, but we have to grow smart, and we have to understand our budget, and we have to understand your taxes. Man, I love new shiny things. You just asked, my husband's sitting back there. But before I shop, I need to check my checkbook. So I'm not saying don't grow, I'm just saying, I am one that is gonna say to the other council members, "I am holding the line for Lord One", because I don't want my five-year-olds to be twenty-one before we can correct that Moody rating again.
My apologies if you felt like I was targeting that, you was, you was standalone type of, but I heard that a lot on the rounds, and I think that's why I was using that analogy, so I apologize.
I wanna address this a little bit differently than I have been, have maybe some of my peers have done. There are towns very close to here that made not smart choices in their growth. And due to those decisions, the town is not what it used to be. And I hear that a lot, and I've lived in one of those communities, and I've watched the repercussions to not smart growth. But when everybody was talking, I will tell you, I echo what my peers say as far as being responsible in our growth. But growth isn't just because of what we have or don't have. I have a friend who's a teacher at this local school, and she has a, a family that's here from overseas. And she said, "How did you end up in Pella?" And what they did, um, I believe the father is a professor at the college, and he could be a professor at many colleges, he was a very talented man. And he took the schools that were looking for someone with his specialty, and then he said, "Where were, where will our children not be shot when they go to school?" And I think that's a huge step in our growth and why we're special. We won, because the chance is very little that their children are in danger here. And that's why I'm proud of this, and that's why I wanna keep this community great. And the decisions that are made by the city council are decisions for this whole community. We are all gonna pay for the decisions. If they're good decisions, we all prosper, and if they're bad decision, we all pay the penalty. So, um, I think that, um, if we want to smart growth, we also need to think about smart housing and affordable housing. And that's a major issue that goes along with all the other options we have for community growth.
You're right, ma'am, it is not necessary to have a firm, a bad, or something. That was a great question. I totally agree, and I agree with, um, Spencer in that either we're moving forward or. I think, and I agree with Spencer in that either we're moving forward or we're going back, there is no sky. How we go forward, I think is an important part. And if we go forward without looking back, that's going to be a problem. We have a heritage tonight. There's been a lot of talk of growth tonight, employment, and I think the one thing that really is the foundation of this community is its people. It's people's convictions, it's people's work ethic, and we've had questions of what we as city council can do. And I think number one is we need to listen to the people here and that we represent, and we need to respond in a manner that reflects this community's convictions. And that will judge our growth. It's you folks that really need to determine. I hear a lot about our, and I don't want to go on here, but this is kind of an example. I hear a lot about our planning and zoning, our zoning laws, how restrictive they can be, how cumbersome it is, and I think this is something that the leadership with your input needs to address. If we want to be in Agnes or West Des Moines, our zoning laws right now will serve this community quite well in decades to come. But is that what we want? Really, the decision has to come from you guys and we represent and try and fulfill your wishes.
Pete, I'm from Pella. Okay. Amongst all you candidates, there seems to be two groups of three that are trying to stand out. Now, one of them seems to be, one of the groups seems to be a hit and miss group by the mayor and a higher-order development company, GenLink slash RDP Holdings. Now, they have received a lot of tax dollars, a couple millions and stuff. Now, in that group seems to be Mark Young, Kyle Nelson, and Spencer Carlstone. Now, the other group seems to be Bruce Stevath, Lynn Bradenworth, and Tony Akko, which by the way, without Bruce, Lynn, and Tony, the duty issue is cool, but still be a closure matter. And we want to thank you guys for opening that path up, and there's still things going on. People wonder what's going on. There's committees working on something, and there's something brought forward, it's not closed. I mean, you guys haven't heard enough lately, but it's still going on, it's still working on that. So I want to really thank you guys for keeping it alive. Now, we got that passed. Now, there's a housing development going on on the west side, Prairie Ridge, and there's South Main Housing complex down in Casey's, and there's a market being built by the Casey's of town there. Now, all these developments, maybe more of them, I don't know, there could be more around town, who knows, are GenLink slash RDP Holdings projects. Now, these projects are taking millions of tax dollars and other perks, which, you know, it'd be all right, that's fine, but I'm sure there's other developers and businesses in this town that would like to have and had also a chance at some of these perks and tax dollars to remodel their stuff and their investments. As was pointed out at City Council meeting one night, and it was the market we're talking about, and it was said, if you let this market have this perk, that means every business in the future in this town also should have the same perk. So whoever builds again in this town is going to keep on receiving these perks. So now, going on from that, now, GenLink and RDP Holdings are involved in some of the campaigns of the mayor's group that he picked, Mark Young, Kyle Nelson, and Spencer Carlstone. Now, can any of you three tell us why, and can you tell us what GenLink expects in return?
I appreciate your question, but I want to open up a little bit more and remember that we ask all the candidates the questions. So we'll start with those three, and I could paraphrase a little bit for you if you don't mind. The connection you're talking about, I guess we start off from the beginning. Your support and backing or support in management or whatever it is, I guess I'm going to start, and I'll start down here. Who helps you guys out campaign management? I mean, it's public record, we bring it up on the internet, but let's find out and then see where we're going with this question, I guess. Yes. I'm going to show my ignorance here a little bit, because I'm not from this side of the river, but who is GenLink? Let's start with that, because I don't know, guys, I'm ignorant in my choice here, I guess, so.
The question answered, so RDP Holdings was.
I'll be delighted to address this, and I'm a bit insulted with personal attachments, accusations. I didn't think that was the format tonight, and I do not know what the perks are that we've had attached to us, but nevertheless, GenLink is the shareholders, multi-generational shareholders of Pella Corporation, whom they have put a great deal of effort into keeping them interested in the city of Pella and keeping corporate headquarters here in the city of Pella. That's basically what GenLink is all about, and the RDP is Pella Corp itself is invested in the city of Pella, and they have designated a percentage of yearly profits to go into a fund to be invested in this community. There's an office, standing whites, people in this town, their sole purpose is to invest money in this town. What is really unique is there is no anticipation of profit. That's not what it's being done for. A direct quote from one of the Harvard type group was, we make our money selling windows. And they do not anticipate making money off of Prairie Ridge, or the market, or South Main, or any of those things. Those are all investments in Pella, hoping benefits the community as a place for their company to grow. Is that clear? Be happy to try to clarify more if that's not clear.
Again, I'm going to try and just broaden this out a little bit, because I don't think, again, three of you were picked out personally, so I'm just going to allow the thing. Who are, if you have campaign managers, raise your hand, or if you don't, whatever. Let's put all down, who are the campaign managers are?
That is me, myself, and I.
You're underpaid.
Correct.
Myself, and I have another individual who helps me out, her name is Ally.
Myself, and this brilliant young woman named Ally, and then there is a person in the GenLink office. In all my years, I've never spent enough money campaigning to have to do any of the paperwork or reporting. That's not going to be the case this year. This individual is familiar with that sort of stuff, so he's going to be doing that kind of paperwork as a volunteer.
My dear wife is my chairman, and my dear wife is my treasurer.
I'm in the same club as Allen. We are the standalones, and my husband's the treasurer, just so I don't spend too much of our money.
I'm not sure I have much of a campaign.
That's a bad mic, I do apologize. We brought eight brand-new mics, and one of them's not working right.
I'm not sure I have much of a campaign, but Aaron Smith is managing the financial part, helping set up the publicity, I guess, to have the file. And then I'm myself, I guess. Strategy-wise, I don't want to talk with friends and dates. I don't know what constitutes an attack, but that kind of felt like one.
That's why we're kind of broadening it out a little bit.
I would only want to engage in that line of questioning to the extent that would say, there's an assumption in that concern expressed in those kind of questions, and the assumption is that there is ulterior motivation or bad, or badness, sorry? All right, that there's ulterior motivation, or badness, or evil, or subversion going on from those entities. I think that's a poor assumption. I think Mark addressed that quite well. The heart behind GenLink, I don't know RDP, the heart behind GenLink, and I've met with Drew, is purely and honestly to attract and retain the talent of a multi-billion dollar company that we all enjoy the fruits of, can maintain its operations here. If you feel that that's bad, that's certainly your prerogative, and certainly can have that opinion, but I know I am one degree separated on multiple levels from anything related to Pella Corp. I was raised in a town near here that was a one-horse town, and everything was one degree separated from that one healthy horse until that one healthy horse was not healthy. And the town will have a very difficult time ever being the same. We do not have to pander or bow to any corporate entity here. They're not asking for that. They're asking for their community to reflect an attitude and atmosphere that's conducive to them being viable, able to recruit, retain talent to this beautiful community that they committed to from several generations. I think we are only being responsible by listening to them. And the investments made in the last, well, a hundred years, I don't, going back to my fifteen years is all I can reference, have been impactful and are effective in helping recruit and retain the talent they need to operate here. I think there's a really strong warning in the community I went to high school in for us to heed to. I agree with looking backwards, because if we do not remember history, then we're doomed to repeat it. I think we're at that point in our narrative, that's what I started tonight with. We're at a really critical point in our narrative, and we have to act on that.
Just to be fair also, these three here in the middle naming their managers and the treasurers, so if you two would also name manager and treasurer, and we'll come back and name treasurers over here, I want everybody to have a fair shot at this, okay? Lynn, you guys?
I did it again. Oh, my goodness. I want to do two things here, because I think it'll be helpful. My campaign manager is my husband, and my treasurer is my husband. On my checks, he is the signature line, but this is the great thing about America and about Iowa. You guys can check on all of us. You just go to the Secretary of State website, you click on candidates, a drop-down box will come down, and in city, or in city in reverse, you hit candidates, and what will happen is you'll be able to follow our spending. We have to report every penny that is donated to us. We have to report who it is from and how we spend it. So you guys can play detective, you can check up on us and see where the money is coming from, what we have spent it on, and who gave us the money. That's called public transparency. That is full public knowledge. So I like to teach people.
So as far as I'm concerned, the report that Lynn's talking about, by the way, we all file on, we have to file by the 28th of October for our first spending report, so the 28th, for those of us that have campaigns filed, we'll be able to see those things that Lynn spoke about. As far as my campaign is concerned, I am the chairman. My stepmother, Sherry Bakova, is the treasurer, and I would guess I'm the campaign manager. My success or failure resides right here. So I'm the one that's knocking on doors, I'm the one that's putting out signs, I'm the one that's, you know, taking activities off work to go visit with people and listen. Because as I said at the top of the meeting here tonight, it's been a great two years that I have not been on the council, because it's really afforded me the time to learn what's important to the community, and that's to have leaders that listen. Not leaders that want to tell you all the things that are going on, but leaders that really genuinely want to invest in you and listen to you. And so that's my campaign in a nutshell.
Again, just quick, to be fair to everybody, treasurer, please.
That is me.
And Irene.
No, no Irene, that's my aunt.
So I knew, I've known Stan Benoit for thirty years since college. For the last five, seven years, we've been in a men's group and talked about several things. Sometimes it's a Bible study, sometimes it's a book study, sometimes it's just great conversation about things that are going on in life and going on in the community. When I was throwing around the idea of running for council, I was talking with not only him, but the other, the three other men that were in my group, and about the ins and outs and knowing that this was my first time, there were several things that I needed to take care of, and he introduced me to Greg Fisher, who is my treasurer, okay? Greg's, he introduced me, from what I understand, he is, he's taking care of my treasury or my checking account on his free time, but Stan introduced me to him, and he is also an employee of GenLink. I would like to ask, you seem pretty intent on this question as well, more involved in this question than maybe the other questions.
Just trying to balance it out, because I think three of you were picked out in a mic. This is forever good.
Yeah, okay, I was just, you're showing an more amount of interest. And I also like, from the question that's being answered or asked, how did, how were, why was that information surmised from someone? I mean, I, I mean, I'm just kind of questioning, I'm just kind of wondering where it came from.
Can I make a comment as like one of the two of us that's kind of neutral up here? You know, with all due respect, when you drive around town, three of one group is in a yard, and three of another group is in a yard, and I'm alone, and Allen is alone. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's an attack, Kyle, to say that there seems to be a link. I don't think that's, I mean, Mr. Hoxberger can be kind of aggressive in the way he asked, but I don't think that was unfair. I think I assumed that too, because that's how I see it, so.
Mark, I think you're left as far as being balanced, so we'll have your treasurer.
Oh.
Sorry. I guess I want everybody to have a fair shot. These three, I went ahead and started with that, so I think everybody should have a fair shot, because these people are not only working for you, they're working with you, they're supporting you, and they're not getting paid, those guys. So I think it's important that everybody understand that this whole, whether it's the one person doing all the work or several people, I mean, this is a big commitment by a lot of people, so, sorry, but you go ahead.
Okay. Likewise, my wife and I are doing the vast majority of getting stuff out and so forth. Greg Fisher, as we just alluded to, was offered to be the person that handled the accounts, did the paperwork, that kind of stuff, which has been a wonderful boost. So that's pretty much the story.
Dan Spott, I live in Pella. Thank you all for running. I've been there before, some of you might remember back in the day. Hi, Mark.
At least twice, at least twice.
Twice, yes. But we won't go on about that. I moved to Pella in nineteen seventy-nine. I hear a lot of people up there saying, we want to be accommodating. In nineteen seventy-nine, this town was not accommodating to a long-haired twenty-one-year-old from New York. However, I stuck and I stayed. You know why? You know why? Because I choose to live here. Those of us that were not born here, that still live here, more than thirty-five years, are here because we want to be here. We like town the way it is. It should cost more to live in Pellicore. I've said that before, I said on Dr. Bob's show last time I ran, when everybody's going on about affordable housing. Affordable housing is a lovely thing if you can afford it. So, we go, we talk about affordable housing, now we're building South Main, I don't know what those are. I hear these ones out by the new Smash Bar, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. I guarantee you, nobody working for my wife at that downtown Casey's, that is not affordable housing for them, okay? So here we're giving perks to somebody out there who's making a whole bull lot of money, which has been alluded to by my friend. And about the people that need the affordable housing to remain in this town and work aren't getting it. Someone mentioned apartments, wonderful idea. Wonderful idea. Not saying at Aunt Clara down in Oskaloosa, but some decent friggin' apartments that working folk can afford. I don't know, what's Wall Street paying now, twenty-eight, thirty dollars an hour? Do they afford three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a townhome? I don't know. I can't. I bought the cheapest house, the most beat-up house on Liberty Street, when I bought my house thirty years ago. And I've been working on it for thirty years. I started a company fourteen years ago. I didn't get a thing from the city, I didn't ask for a thing. I just want to be left alone, I want my taxes to stay low. We keep talking about this fancy new rec center and fancy stuff and all that. If she's got water in her friggin' basement, we probably need to deal with that first. Now, the city has done some great things, buried the power lines. Amazing. We don't lose power. Love it. Money well spent. I know that we're working on cleaning the storm sewer water out of our water treatment water. Good, that's all good, that's all good. What I really want to ask you guys, and no ten-minute answers, jeez, we should have kept this to three-minute answers, holy smokes, the front eleven. It took twenty minutes for them to say, "Who's on the frickin' cafe?" Okay, so here's the thing. This is going to be a quick two-part. You're for the airport, you're for the rec center, go. Or not. Whoever wants to go first, doesn't matter to me.
I'll be the silly one to go first.
I thought we were going after housing there for a second. I run against you, too.
He has run against me. And we've had a bunch of conversations in his business down the street about the airport.
For the rec center or for the airport?
For or against the airport, or against the rec center. All right. The fifty-million-dollar rec center, please, nobody knew how much that thing was. Airport, we'll go there first. I'm for the airport. I was for the airport the last two times I was on the city council. And I'm still as convicted to be for the airport as I was then. And it's not about whether Pellicore, or Ramir, or Musco, or Wyler, pick your company, pick your airplane. It's about the safety of people that are flying in and out of that airport that matters. We've talked about the length of the runway, and if you extend it into the south, or extending it to the north, and going to the south, there's a whole bunch of homes that would have to go away. If you go to the north, one sixty-three has to change. It's not about whether somebody has a pet airplane, or the rich that have all the... It's about safety. It's about people that are flying in to do business with Pellicore Corporation. It's about people that are flying in with bigger planes to do business with other industries, Ramir, whoever it is. As a community, we have a responsibility to make sure we have a safe airport. When I was taking my pilot's lessons, which I'm not current anymore, often I'd heard other pilots talk about how they love coming to the Pellicore Airport, because they get really great service, but they're really nervous about coming to the Pellicore Airport because of safety things. And so, that's why the new airport is important. So, I'm for the airport, sorry, that was more than two minutes on that topic. The rec center. You'll probably not find anybody in this room that's more in favor of fixing the community center than going for a new rec center first. I'm not saying we shouldn't ever have a rec center, because I'm not against those type of things. But, two years ago, when I ran for city council, I sat on a stage with a few of these folks, and we were asked a similar question, and everybody pounded their hand on the table and said, "We're going to do whatever we can to get that community center done, because it needs to be done." There are citizens in this community that depend on that service. And if it's not in the center of our town, that's a big deal to them. So, I am still as convicted to get that done. I think it's a great partnership with the community and the city. They have commitments for near four and a half million dollars on a fourteen-million-dollar project. Those are the kind of things we should get. Down the road, if things like storm sewers and people's basements are fixed, and some of these other things that we've committed to as a community are handled, and a sports facility makes sense, that's great. If a sports facility makes sense today, then I want a mayor who's honest enough to tell me who the contributors are and how much money they're going to contribute. Because if I have to come to each one of you and justify why you have to have increased taxes, you need to know who you're doing business with. And we don't have that today.
I don't think that was three minutes.
Neither one of them worked. And I even have a watch on.
Where is Dan? Where did he go off to? Did he run out of the room? Oh, smoking, isn't that kind of being him? You know, in the beginning, when I was first elected, I wasn't sure that I was for the airport. So, I just go, I went down the middle of the road. And as I've been on the city council for four years, I am seeing landowners voluntarily ask the city to buy their land. And that's huge to me, you know? All I heard was eminent domain, eminent domain. But that really is not the case. There is not a large amount of individuals who would have big swaths of their properties removed from them, because people are coming forward and volunteering with the purchase, because the press that they would get with the land is really quite good. So, I've changed my mind, and I am for the airport. I think it would be great for growth, I think if we need it for the safety standpoint. We have two choices, we can either build it, or we can move the highway that they fly over, or we can demolish homes in Boslon. So, yes, I am for that. I walk alongside of Tony, which would be no surprise to any of you, given the fact that I used to be the encyclical director of the historic Pellicore Trust. I love our historic buildings. I believe we need to first focus on the community center, get that jewel back to the shining glory it should be and could be, not only to our community members, but also to our tourists. And then, we can look at the rec center with fiduciary responsibility right here and right here. We have to, we are called to, and when we hold our hands up to take that oath of office, our job is to spend your money wisely. Our job is not to put you into a sixteen-year hole again. So if I can see the numbers, and I see black, and I don't see red, and I see contributors, and I have full awareness of the contribution levels and the commitment levels of those, and it all makes sense, and two and two equals four, then it's something I can support.
Yes. Yes.
That's cute. Okay, I'll try to breathe, but not that breathe. I am a neutral on the airport. I can argue both ways on the airport. I have friends that are farmers that are in the path and not happy to give their property up. But I've also worked at an FBO, a small airport, and it was an awesome experience, and I would recommend everybody spend some time at the airport. As far as the rec center, I am all for the rec center after the community center, because I sat here two years ago as we made the commitment to the community center that they were going to be our priority. I'm sad to say, two years has passed and it has not been done, because that's not what they were told. And the rec center, I am all for the rec center. If we can do that project without you paying a ton of money to get that done.
I am definitely for the airport. This is something that, I think it was the first year that I came on, there was a presentation at the Mayor Pavilion, and it's been going on since. I think we need that to support businesses, our major corporations, very... It's important to them. Also, it's a safety issue, as Tom spoke. So I am definitely for the airport. As far as the rec center, I'm all about patient progress. I'm very sad, and I probably come as no surprise, but that building high school, the bones are good. We need to bring that back to life to keep the end of work and service of the citizens of Pellicore. It's time. That's the patient approach. After that, it'd be nice to have a forty-five, fifty-million-dollar indoor rec center. But we need to pay for it, and that's where the patience comes in.
Airport. Mr. Bakova was spot-on. At the end of the day, there's a safety issue. Also, the FAA and Iowa Department of Transportation has come out very clearly that they cannot continue to support every little town having an airport. They are driving consolidation, and that is also part of the issue here. Community center and indoor rec center, I'm fine with fixing up the community center or building a new one, we need a community center. Building is sound, I still have questions about what's going to happen inside the building. In my mind, we give Union Street Players all the space they want, and everything else goes to arts and crafts. I don't know if any of you have examined, walked through, the space they use for the art programs right now. They're doing the best they can, it's nice and bright, it's a rabbit warmth. They do remarkable things in there. I could see turning all the rest of that building, including the gymnasium, into arts and crafts, let your imagination go. Woodworking, cooking classes, wherever your mind goes, we can do much better on the culture side than what we're doing right now. So, yes to both.
Okay, I'm in favor of the airport. The farm kid at me struggled with that initially, but as I thought about it over the years, and I've seen the farmers voluntarily sell their ground, it became more palpable for me. And so, you know, given the information that several other candidates here alluded to about the safety issue, so I would be in favor of the airport. Concerning the rec center, I'm also in favor of the rec center in a measured way. You mentioned fifty million dollars, I know that's the top end, so I think we need to take a look at the scope in which that is built. Within, if fifty million dollars is an option, maybe a scaled-down rec center can be accomplished in addition to a revitalized community center, or maybe a different community center. I'm not sure, I know Mr. Skibout had mentioned that the bones are good, they are good. I don't know, I would struggle with plugging fifty to twenty million dollars into a hundred-and-five pro building myself. That's a personal opinion. And so, but I'm in favor of both.
As far as the airport, I am a little bit like Robin, I'm indifferent. I would love to see it, because I do think that it would provide a lot of opportunities, especially for businesses. And I would also say that, for many of you that were at the forum, on Thursday night, I alluded to this, and no one corrected me, so I would assume that this is a fair statement, that I have a friend that used to work at the airport, and he said that Pellicore is one of, I believe it was three airports in the nation that have a special exemption, and if we were to have an accident, we would lose that exemption. And then what do we do? We're behind the ball on that. So I would say I definitely probably lean towards yes on the airport, but I would say with some of the court stuff going, I don't even know if that's a decision that we will potentially have to be making. So, as far as the indoor rec center, I am for that to an extent. Again, to me, it's all about money, so what scope can we get? To me, it should be partially, or probably mostly private funding, or we'll do some private and public funding. As somebody who used to be a swimmer, we need a regulation-sized pool, would be fantastic. We've needed that for twenty-plus years. That's when I was on swim team, I was on swim team for a long time. And to not be able to host official swim meets, actually I think does a disservice to this community. We have strong schools that would be able to support and to use that to be able to have our own swim teams. We could team up both Pellicore and Pellicore Christian, and they wouldn't have to drive. To me, again, it's the scope of it, but I will also say that the arts are also something very important to me as well. I grew up, I'm a singer, I did speech, I did these kinds of things. I go to some of the plays that the Union Street Players do. And it is incredible to be able to support them as well. So to me, that is, and apples and oranges, they are two separate things, and they both need to be addressed in that, because they're both vitally important. We have incredible extracurriculars in both school systems in Pellicore, as well as in our homeschool communities as well. And to negate one of those is, I think, it would be a mistake. Oh, one more thing. I do also, what were the numbers that were proposed for the... Wasn't it twenty-five to fifty million for the rec center?
The way it was presented to council, the records we saw, were fifty million. Five million was for the university extension, forty-five for the building. That's what was presented to them.
Yep, and then the... Thank you, Bruce, because that is what I saw. That is what I was led to believe. Now, we can talk about scope, but your government always pays lower than what they bid.
Okay, and then the rec center, I believe, was, what, four and a half to fifteen million? Or, sorry, sorry, the community center, yes.
The renovation. And that has had a little bit of age to that, but it was a year, a year and a half ago, I think. And their four and a half million was presented by the community, friends of the community center, and it would have been nine or ten million for the sale. And that, I don't know if you saw the renderings of that, but they got an architect, and it is phenomenal. It really, the main problem with that building is access. And they put an addition that fit very well architecturally with that building, and it made all floors, both wings accessible.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that I had the right numbers, and I want for people to also be informed on what the numbers are that we are talking, because part of the reason that I am running is to get people informed. And so I think to sit here and to just throw fifty million, again, I know that was the rendering, but I don't know that that's the hard, set, fast numbers, and as far as the community center and stuff too. And I want us to be transparent for you guys as well, because it does affect you guys. So I wanted to make sure that numbers are out there. So I wanted to make sure that numbers are out there, accurate numbers. So thanks Bruce for this.
My name is Lori Frederickson and I just want to confirm, my boys were lying in the airport for years and jet pilots do not like landing here. It's very dangerous. And I live in a landing pattern and I've watched jets go over, I think, the airport too fast. And sure enough, they gotta pull up and go around. And it's very dangerous. And my son is a jet pilot and I don't want to land me like that. Anyway, my real question is about, I think, I got here a little late and you were talking about worker shortage. And that's a national problem because our federal government shut us down. And then they pay people to stay home. And so this failure to be able to find employees is nationwide. And now they're going to give us a vaccine mandate. So even people who want to work can't. And I know it's especially a problem, I see nationwide and healthcare, we're running short. I mean, our hospitals nineteen, or no, eleven percent under staff. And if the vaccine mandate goes in, it's going to be another eleven percent. And we as a community, we depend on our hospitals for our healthcare and as workers, we want to be able to work to feed our families. Now I see nationwide Greg Abbott, he's declared his state, you know, he's nullifying the vaccine mandate. I hope that our governor will do the same. But until and unless she does, you are our first line of defense against the tyrannical federal government. What will you do to make sure that we can keep working?
Let's start with Bruce's then.
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure about the question ma'am, but if you are wondering if I am in favor of vaccination mandates, no.
I mean, can you do something? I mean, Greg Abbott has said in this state, no businesses can have a vaccine mandate. And I hope our government does the same, but can you do something to make our city a man, a vaccine sanctuary city? Or at least work with the governor, put pressure on her, say, hey, she's very reasonable. I think she, you know, no vaccine mandate. We want to work. We are Americans and we are free and we want to stay that way.
I think that is something, I think that is something you can do as well as any of us up here. As a citizen, you need to contact the mayor, our, excuse, governor and your senator and your representative and express your feelings. As far as the community itself, I don't know if it, the scenario could exist where it may come before us as council. And I will just say that I am not in favor of mandatory vaccination.
So I think if that, if that vaccine mandate goes into effect, this, your problem with finding workers, it's going to go up tenfold.
I will not disagree.
Can I answer that too?
Yeah, everybody.
Okay, I have the privilege of serving on the Marion County Department of Health. And I can tell you that I'm very confident that our board of supervisors are going to take control of that issue should it need to happen.
No comment.
Well, I'm just going to say, I don't think I'm at that pay grade that those are going to become my obligations. But I can tell you my personal stance is I believe it's a matter of choice. And I know that with the mask mandate that we had, it was a matter of choice. If you had a store, you were able to determine if you were going to ask your patrons to wear a mask or not. So I don't believe in a mandate and I believe in choice.
Yeah, you know, as a, as a leader in a small manufacturing company here in town, when five people are on the job to work because they're sick, that's quite impactful to our production line. To the fact that it's, it's staggering. And it'll stop our business. So one of the things that I've done to be proactive, because I am not for a mandate either, is I've written a letter to the governor and I've talked about how it impacts our business. And just my personal position of where we should or shouldn't be on the, the topic of mandatory vaccination. We have some employees that begrudgingly did it and, and still to this day come by our, my office and tell me how bad they think it is. So I, I don't feel like in an employee setting where I'm trying to find people to come to work every day, which is getting tougher and tougher. That's not something that as an employer, I necessarily want to impose on one of my employees. That's a great question and a very hot button topic right there. I'm going to say I, I don't know why we would, or when we would have to step in for something like that. Can, because we do policy. As far as I'm concerned, we don't do law. And so, I mean, my, well. Well, port of, yes, okay. I, I'm not sure that, I think those are still a little different. And I would say I am not for mandating vaccines. However, I am not anti-vaccine at the same point. I want people to be able to choose what is best for them, to talk with their doctors and, and to do what is best. And that's where I will leave that.
Lori, I appreciate your passion on this.
I'm a free American. I'm glad.
I hear you. This is real to me in, in a number of different ways with my, with my kids and with me. I am not in favor of a mandate in any way, shape or form. I think it should be a choice. And it's, I think it's, again, I don't know if we as a council, that's something that I would have to look into as, as to what we can do as a council. And certainly as a citizen, we can make those opinions known to the governor.
You know, it's really serious because people who don't want to.
Somehow, somewhere, I believe you have had your piece. Somewhere, somehow in America, we have lost our concern for the common good. I one hundred percent support a mask mandate or the option of being regularly tested.
Hold on, so I can't listen to all this at this point. I'm trying to go high, but I can't. It's a scientific problem. It's a scientific medical problem with a scientific medical solution. I don't, I would agree with Alan's comments. I'm not sure we have the regulatory political power to do things specifically about this. And I also agree with Bruce that this is something you have the right to legislate or somehow. This is an issue you should talk with your physician, not your herbalist, not your chiropractor, not your veterinarian. This is a scientific medical problem with a scientific medical solution. And I would ask you to consider those that are taking care of the people that are sick for two reasons.
Hi, Anita Fisher again. I'm curious, how many of you guys have seen this?
Do you see what this is?
It is, absolutely. It's the Friends of the Pella Community Center. And it explains absolutely everything in here, what they plan on doing. And I just want to tell you, it's pretty sad that all their hands are not raised. Okay, because this is important to people of Pella. So you should be able to look at this. If you do not know where you can find something like this, you are welcome to go to the Pella library.
Are you seeing that by, at least a year ago? Is that still current or everything's changed?
As far as I know, it is current. Okay, so you can go to the Pella library and see what it's all about there and what they have planned. Now, there's way more there than I don't remember who mentioned, but there is elderly that go there and play pool. Okay, there's a lot of stuff that's going on there that you guys just do not know. So you need to be checking this out. Crossroads, those there, very important, mental health, guys, very important, okay? So please, check this out. And if, if it's okay, I'd like to read something from it quickly.
Question two though?
It is a question. Okay, so just to clarify for you guys, here's a paragraph. It says, "This exciting transformation is estimated to cost approximately fifteen million." Okay, "Funding for this joint private, public-private venture could include the potential for a ten million general obligation bond, referendum and five million charitable contributions." So that clarifies things. Also, I wanted to put something, here's a quote, okay? It says, "We can't underestimate the importance of the arts and culture in the life of our community. The programs made possible by our community center expand our horizons and support a high quality of life for Pella residents." Do you know who this quote was by? Dondan Ward, Mayor Pella, February twenty twenty. My question is, are you guys going to hold him to what he said? You may answer now, thank you.
Don't you know, Anita, we're going to hold him to that word because I was sitting there when he said that he was putting his baggage behind this community center. And he will be hearing that from me.
We've had, he and I have had discussions about this and yes, I think everyone should hold the mayor to this promise that he made to citizens, absolutely.
It's, it's vitally important. And if everybody on this panel hasn't spent an hour at Fair Haven, listening to those folks tell you why that one time a week they get to walk to this community center with their son or daughter is important to them, you've done yourself an injustice. And when you hear those kinds of things, it doesn't take very long for you to figure out that, that those people depend on having a community center in the center of their community where they can access, they can get out, they can, they can feel like there's still a, a young free adult in our community. And so it's so important and, and I sat next to the mayor like a few of us did and we absolutely need to hold him to the fire on this, absolutely.
Spencer, you got skipped out there. Did you have a microphone?
Well, I wasn't on stage with the promise of that, so I don't feel like I promised anything. I think the mayor sets a vision, maybe a direction, but the city council is responsible for actuating the, the plan, I believe. So he has no real jurisdiction or power if I understand the city government well, to actually actuate a plan. So do as you will with that information, I guess. Community center is an issue that several have addressed in, in robust form. I think that the Friends of a Community Center or Friends of the Community Center, in some ways the people that have different ideas are not Friends of the Community Center, which I don't think is actually a true assumption either. Union Street Players is a fantastic organization. They deserve a first rate theater that has adequate seating, that you can hear them, what they're saying, that they have out of a backstage, side stage, under stage, I don't know what they would be. But they don't have it currently. I don't see how the physical plant in a beautiful high school can still house that. I also thought of Crossroads, fantastic organization. Third floor is not an ideal location for them. The Arts Center, fantastic facility. And those kids have brought home numerous treasures from the Arts Center that I still don't know what to do with. But they're fantastic. The Arts Center deserves a proper space where a potter can stay in the pottery space, a drawer can stay in the drawing space, a painter can stay away from a potter in the pottery space. I didn't know that current property involved, I would gladly let it down. I'm not sure how the laws of physics could be twisted in a way that could house all the things that a community currently needs in that facility, let alone where it needs to build to do all the things we've talked about already tonight. Attracting, retaining the talent, where our organizations need to thrive. So I, I think the building is fantastic. We've talked about housing. It could be a fantastic housing and multi-use space that we could all still enjoy. It could be utilized for, for a long, long time. I won't say eternally, because that's really long time. We have to think outside the box. We've talked about creative solutions, adding a glass foyer to it. I'm not sure it's as creative as we need to be to really make a center like that throughout, fit the needs of our current community, let alone the ones of the people that are going to live. I've spoken with potters who are frustrated with how it's only fired once every other week. They need to fire it three times a week. Just little bit losses that are, are currently, those aren't, have been met. And I don't know if their plans meet that requirement. Having recently renovated an old building, I think we have to plan for lots of upcharging on the process. I think that building has great bones. I also think the bones are lined with asbestos, which I don't think is cheap to remediate. I think, I think we're a little bit, we're both dreaming, which I love. I think dreaming is a fantastic idea. I think some are dreaming about restoring a building to a full functioning community rep space. I don't think that's realistic. Some are dreaming of a hundred and fifty million dollar ref space. Don't think that's realistic. We've got to be creative and coming together. Whoever's elected as council, regardless of what the mayor has said or vowed, to decide what is right for the community now and for the future. My personal impression is for my patients, I'd love them to have safe indoor walking space. So indoor walking track sounds like a great plan. I don't see how that could happen in a little high school. I think swim, I think Alan mentioned that the swimming, fantastic idea. We could host thousands of people in January and February. That'd be a great plan for our cities downtown, restaurants and accommodations. So we need to think outside of that community center, current community center building, the old high school can accommodate.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood that you were in favor of restoring the community center.
Please sir, the previous question was airport recs, and I said yes and yes.
I, I just, where you talk about we need an indoor walking ceremony. Have you been to Central Commonsfield, mom? It's beautiful. There's still some memberships there. And now, here again, I'm not opposed to having a rec center, but is it something that we need right now? And I think Union Street Players would be just fine with, at least from what I have understood, just fine with the renovation of the current community center. I, I, you know, we didn't go out and council was waiting for the cost on a replacement community center. We were hoping to have that last time during the discussion. We did not. But either way, the current community center, if we can restore it, and it may not be all encompassing, like a new multimillion dollar one would be. But I do know that it creeps me that that gymnasium was closed. And since that's closed, we haven't had any basketball, little type basketball leagues. That's where they play. There's a lot of homeschool families use that gymnasium. And I'm not saying that that's what a division is for, but it's been in the service for over a hundred years. And I'd really like to see it continue in whatever form that the people would like. in whatever form that the people would like.
I need to apologize. There's a reason I gave one order. You guys got a order that time. I didn't realize the reason why I went. Mark, you're up next. I do apologize.
Can I say something?
Let's finish up. We're almost out of time. I just want to keep this going.
Yeah, real quick. We absolutely need a real deal community center. And you just mentioned that just for due diligence, proposals are new and is being worked on. I'm not married either way until I see some of that. My question, from the very first day that I saw that booklet, is who really is our customer here? Are we talking a senior center? Great, that's fine, if that's our customer. Are we talking a great place to drop our kids off after school for art programs and stuff like that? Fine. But I've never really gotten a clear understanding of who our core customer is for this project. That would help me in going forward.
I've said before, and I think in the last forum and then in an interview I did, I think this is not a one-issue or a rep center issue or a community center issue. I think this is a both issue. I think both, the fine arts and athletics need be a vibrant part of our community for all age levels. And I'm with these guys. And it has to be a measured approach, right? So what are the costs of each of the facilities? Whether they're new, do we repurpose the community center? I don't think anybody's in favor of, you know, not using the community center in some vibrant way. But I would be in favor of taking a look at the whole scope of all three of the projects, one, two, or three projects, and see how it impacts the community holistically and then move from there based on the dollars.
I am a guy that likes to follow what do we need. So if the community center fits what we need, I am a hundred percent into renovating it. If it doesn't meet what we need, then I'm willing to look at other options. That being said, I do want to keep the community center. I grew up going to that community center. But is it, is it as it's used, the best for that space? That's what I would love to continue to look into as well and see all of our options. Because either way, it's spending a lot of money. And I think it's doing our due diligence to look at both sides of that spectrum to see the money that we spend, does it get us what we need?
I promised everyone here that we'd be done by nine o'clock. I also promised the closing statements. There's eight of you. We're down to less than twenty minutes. So if we do two and a half minutes each, we can hit that nine o'clock hour. Again, we'll start left to right. And if you will, I know there's some more questions out here. If you want to stick around for backwards, that's up to you guys. Again, this is not my building. I simply sponsored this event like we did a couple of years ago. I do have a couple announcements at the end. When we get done here, we'll go ahead for closing, please.
For me, I, as stated earlier, I am doing this on my own, by myself. I am who I am. Like, that is, that's my whole thing. So whether that wins me the election or not, that is who I am. And I will stay true to that. And I really, I really want the opportunity to bring fresh ideas. I love sitting in the tension of between what's new, what's old, and again, what do we need as a community? And I think that we are, again, at a precipice that we will see that in the next five years, the trajectory of the next probably couple of generations of people. And so, again, there's a lot of money being discussed. And so I think it is, it is very important to be able to see all sides of it. I have no agenda other than to do what is, what is best for our community, to listen to folks like yourselves that want to learn, to be informed, and to, and you guys should have that right and that ability to do that and to have your concerns brought forward. And so I would love to continue to meet each one of you. I will be here till midnight, if that's what it takes, even if we're out in the parking lot, to meet you. So because I don't know everything, I will be the first one to say that. But I know that maybe one of you does have a solution to the lower income, or, sorry, not lower income, affordable housing. And it's just a matter of somebody talking to you. And that's what I want to be. I want to listen to our people and do what is best for our city.
All right. First of all, thanks for being here tonight and investing your night in this. I know it's been two and a half, three hours. So thanks for hanging in. About twice a year, I get a visit from one of my sisters and brother-in-law. And they love Pella. They love coming here. They love everything about it. They're from Kansas City. And they're barely in the house. And my brother says to me, let's go for a drive. My brother-in-law says, let's go for a drive. Because he wants to see what we've done. All right? He lived in a community similar to Pella, where it had a college. It wasn't similar to Pella, but it had a college. And so he, he got to see what their community did versus us. And he says, how do you do it? How do you do it? And so he's interested in seeing the things, but that, his eyes kind of glaze over as I show him things. And more than anything, he's most interested in aren't necessarily the projects. He's most interested in, in the people, and the mindset, and the stories behind why Pella is the way Pella is. Right? And so we talk about the people. We talk about the groups of people. We talk about the businesses and how they're committed to the community. And we talk about everyone who's so invested in making a place that we love, that we all love to live here. And so we have great needs here. And we've alluded to several tonight. Obviously, the infrastructure, we talked about. We talked about workforce. We talked about affordable housing. And we talked about amenities to attract and retain families. And, but, all of this takes the people to do it. And so I'm excited that we have people like here in the community that are so invested in doing this. If you take a look at my involvement in the community and in the schools, I have a track record of bringing people together. Like Alan, I want to listen. So I have a track record of listening to people and of problem solving. And if you were to, if you were to talk to my friends and talk to my buddies, they call me if they want something done. Hey Kyle, can you come and help me with this? Hey Kyle, would you come and help me with this? So I'd like to see myself as a doer. And I think I would take that forward into my, my time as a council member if I'm given the opportunity to do that. So I view myself as a pathway. I mentioned this the other night. I view myself as a pathway to doing the smart things, to love Pella, but also grow Pella in a way that, that has a bright future for us. So I look forward to talking with each one of you. I'm more than willing to stay afterwards as well. And again, thanks for being here today.
Pella is capable of doing bold things. The water park, sports park, and particularly the sports park was done in a public-private cooperation-type effort, which I fully expect going forward, more bold things will be accomplished. Because we have to look five, ten, and even fifteen years forward. We're not talking about building things in the short term here. We're talking about big, bold initiatives. And we can do it. Sure, we have to be responsible about revenue. But we have had a track record of mayors like Johnny Minnigan, Ted Zoster, and Jim Mueller, and now Don DeWort. Smart business heads. They're not going to let things go south. Nor is our staff. We have an awesome staff. We can do it. We can move forward. We can move forward in a fiscally responsible and managed way. And I guess to cap it off, I would still like to be part of that because I know we can do it. Thank you.
A lot of people don't necessarily think this is the case, but number one responsibility of a council member is fiscal responsibility. We are in charge of your tax money and how it is dispensed. Twenty years ago, when I came on, we were laying people wrong because we couldn't afford to pay them. And Darryl Dobinacker ran on that to gain fiscal responsibility again. And Jim Mueller was part of that. It was those four, Mayor Dobinacker, Jim Mueller, Rick Savory, and Rick Slings all ran on that grounds. I do not want to go back to that. And so that's really the foundation of what I take most serious is that we are responsible for your, how we spend your funds. Also, I don't want to go on here. I really want to maintain the values that we have in this community. Because that's what makes this. There's issues at hand, and they will continue to be issues in the future. Several. And it's how we address them. And I would like another four-year term to work for you. I love this community, and I would appreciate your part. And I also would be remiss not to thank Mike Roberts for putting this on. Thank you, Mike.
I've said for many times over the last seven years that I had the opportunity, probably ten or twelve years ago, I lived in Oskaloosa, I worked in Oskaloosa, and I got invited to come to Pella to do a prayer day. I think we met weekly. We would meet at third church, and we would go up in the prayer tower, and we would pray for Pella. And I will say, probably until I meet Jesus face-to-face, that I believe that is a lot of why Pella is the success that it is. It's the faith that this community has. And I will continue to pray for this community, whether I'm on the city council, or I'm on planning, or zoning, or I'm retired and sitting at the nursing home. I want to say that we didn't address very often tonight affordable housing, and that will continue to be my passion. Whatever comes after this is to get some housing here that people of moderate income can afford to live here. Because I think when we open this community to people of moderate income, again, great things will happen. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Mike, for hosting us tonight. And I appreciate the opportunity. I will tell you that being one of the kind of loners in this race, I appreciated the opportunity to deal with all of the people up here. And I would with great confidence say, we are here because we love this community. I think we all see the same end result. We see different ways to get there. And I think we have a great city, a great city council, and great citizens. And I am proud to live here. I'm proud to tell people that I live here. And thank you. Thank you for being the community that you are.
Pella's a extraordinary place. It's welcoming, thriving, set apart, industrious, innovative, caring, generous, rich in heritage, and about the possibilities. Our deep Dutch roots are alive and strong, allowing for a firm trunk with many healthy branches, great fruit for all of us to enjoy. Hence to that tree and its graciousness that I was allowed to graft my family into it fifteen years ago for all the health and fruit that it does provide. So I'm grateful for that. And like that book already, we're all lovingly looking forward to serving fast. I look forward to seeing where our collective growth protects us. We're all in this together. We're not enemies, we're neighbors. We may disagree on how to get there, as we were saying. But this is a great opportunity for democracy to thrive. You hopefully have heard the differences enough to know where you land. And yeah, good, let's show our kids how democracy can work well. We don't have to hate each other if we think differently. We don't have to dig our trenches deeper. We can be together, and that's what we want, so.
I have nothing pre-planned to say. I have no piece of paper to read from. I just have my heart to speak from. And I have loved representing all of you. I can without assurance say, I'm probably the most accessible city staff member, elected official in this community. And how do I know that? Because in the middle of loading trucks, you've come to talk to me. And I've handed you a flat of flowers and said, well, if we're gonna talk, you're gonna load them. In the middle of potting petunias, you've come to talk to me. And I say, hand me that trowel and let's talk. It's that kind of leadership that I believe gets to the true nucleus of our community. You have to know the people. You have to understand your ward. You have to plead your ward. And I do that every day. I want the opportunity to continue with the Oskaloosa street corridor. It was a concept that was developed sitting around a table with a bunch of Southsiders and a whole bunch of Mountain Dew and several bottles of water. I want to see it through. I'm asking you, will allow me to see it through? I want to represent you. I want to walk alongside of you. I want to go to the planning meetings with you when you're too scared to go alone. And when you come into chambers and you stand behind that microphone, know that I'm praying for you. Because that is one of the most courageous things a citizen can do. So with your blessing and with your vote, I would be honored and privileged to do it all over again for the next four years.
So one of the beauties of what we do is we give the opportunity to come and speak. And so first of all, thank you to those of you that spoke tonight. Because I know that having a personal question isn't always easy to stand up in a room of some folks you may or may not know and pour your heart out. It's not, it's not easy to do. So to do that is important. And I think it's great that we can sit up here and each of us give our perspective. And we may not all agree on it, right? But we all have a perspective because we all care about this community. And, you know, you talk about people that come here and want to know how you do it. And I'm sure we all, you know, I get really, really prideful when I hear that. I get tingles on my arms when people say, how do you guys do this kind of stuff? And it happens because of mindful, honest leadership. And people that put citizens before their personal priorities and agendas. And what I want to do for you is, as I mentioned at the top of the evening, I've learned that the priority of a city councilman, aside from all the things that Bruce and Mark and others have identified, is we have to remember that every day when we get up, we're a city council person, and our first responsibility is to you. And so I want to be that person for you as an at-large council member. You know, the times in the grocery store, I joke with some of my friends that I pick different times to go to Hy-Vee now based on when the busy times are, right? Because sometimes it's five minutes if you go at eight o'clock at night, or sometimes it's an hour and a half if you go at six thirty. So it does matter. But the cool part about that is it's listening to people that care about the community as much as I do, or in some cases, more. So I would very much value your vote. I would appreciate your support. And many of you that have supported me already has been, it's been great, and I appreciate that. And again, I thank you all for coming here tonight. Because without your input, we'll just end up like every other community. You know, and we don't want to be every other community. We want to be unique, and we want to be Pella. And we should all be proud of that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all again very much for coming out tonight. It takes a big desire and a lot of courage to stand up in front of... It takes a big desire and a lot of courage to stand up in front of...